Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we have an alternate. Sorry. Okay, we'll appoint Diane for, let's see, for Anne, I guess, who may or may not make it. She's on the West Coast, so she just emailed to say that she's probably not going to make it. But in any event, that gives us four. We've got a quorum to start. Maybe somebody else will join us, but that's okay. We're here. The only thing on our agenda is a special meeting is the sign regulation discussion. And we have our town attorney who wrote seventeen or eighteen pages for us. And Mike thought that you might start with a little summary of what we have in our hand. I think sooner or later, we're going to have to go through it page, you know, paragraph by paragraph. But why don't you give us an introduction?
Yeah, Mike, can you pull it up on the screen?
Yes, I'll do that right now.
It's a combination of a few documents. It's it's the existing regulation plus Mike's former draft plus a model sign regulation from the American Bar Association. And I pared it down, believe it or not, I pared it down a lot from the model regulation because I don't like zoning regulations or sign regulations that you need a master's degree in planning to read and understand. So I tried to simplify it and but keep the essential parts of it in place and add those sections that I think were necessary to upgrade the existing regulation. Can you go to the start, Mike? So a lot of it's self-explanatory. I'm not going to read it all to you, but just sort of go through it to understand the structure of it and where I think we ought to go next with it. One is applicability, you know, every sign erected, maintained, or altered after the effective date has to meet these regulations. Nine point two is purpose and intent. I think it's important to have an intent section. You know, you've read it and you see the area that 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 covers.
I love the scientific.
Yes. The sign scientist, which I consulted and
Right, I was just wondering, okay.
I think that has to do with like the light emitting noise, the lights from these, you know, how far can you see it and that sort of thing.
Okay.
The first real substantive section is prohibited signs. And, you know, we have to come right out and say these signs are prohibited. And you know, it's pretty common sense abandoned signs, utility signs, vehicular signs. Meaning that, you know, if you're a landscaper and you've got the name of your business on the side of your truck and your truck is parked in your driveway, that's not considered a sign in the residential area, that kind of thing. Now, that can get out of control if you have five trucks and they're big and one of them's broken down and up on jacks and the only purpose of that truck is to advertise the fact that you own landscaping business. Then, you know, I guess we could handle that as a motor vehicle issue, but the fundamental idea here is that people have a right to identify their business on the side of their vehicles. Mechanical movement signs. Pennant strings and streamers, you know, for the automobile dealers, that kind of thing. Not to pick on them, but animated signs, flashing signs. And I should say, I've included all this stuff, but, you know, you could say, well, we don't want to do that. We want to do it this way. We want to allow that or not allow this. This is just a starting point for you to sort of give Mike and I input as to what the next draft should look like and what should be in, what should be out, that kind of thing. Balloon signs. Except the section of balloons used in temporary, non-commercial situations. You don't want to outlaw that, you know, side yard birthday party, obviously. Signs that obstruct traffic, signs which emit smoke, interactive signs, reflective signs that contain mirrors, signs which impede ingress, knee grass from doors, windows, fire escapes, that sort of thing. Interactive signs, signs incorporating beacon and festoon lighting. Banners of the type suspended across a public street without permission of the owner of the property and road. We obviously have to make allowance for the banners that cross hot metal, but you don't put those up without DOT permission, so that not an issue here. Roof signs, which is signs that project above the roof line. Signs without permission of the property owner. And that gets to signs on public property, which I handle a different way later on, but that would absolutely prohibit any sign on public property that wasn't approved by the town. Signs that have obscene and pornographic subjects as determined by you. And signs that promotes illegal activity and billboards and off-premises signs. I put billboards and off-premises signs as a prohibited sign because I just assumed you wanted that. And you can tell me I'm wrong about that, but an off-premises sign is any sign that doesn't advertise the premises. Now, we have some exceptions to that, like the River View has a big sign on hot metal that's not on the premises. So if you think about that situation, that particular sign would be grandfathered in. But, you know, that's there for a reason. That was determined to be necessary to advertise, you know, the River View banquet hall, which is an on-hot metal, but, you know, it's almost like a directional sign. So jump in anywhere you want here. I don't want to do a monologue, but wherever you have questions or want to make a comment, please feel free to do so. Now, these next section is signs that are exempt from permit requirements. I think this is also a good section to have in because often it comes up, you know, is that a sign we regulate? Do we not regulate that sign? I had a question just today about the signs at the pack, not the banners at the pack. And I determined those aren't signs, but that's another issue. But official traffic signs, government signs, signs inside a building, holiday decorations. E is interesting. Personal expression signs of any sign type, including political statements, campaign signs and flags, provided they don't exceed three square feet in area per side in non-commercial nature and not illuminated. The best example of this is, you know, the Trump signs that are still up in lots of places. This limits them to three square feet, which is not very big. But that's what it's intended to get at. If you own a home and you want to express a personal opinion on something, you have the right to do so. It's protected speech under the First Amendment. And we don't want to even try to regulate that because it won't be successful.
Can I ask?
Sure.
So there are certain areas or homes that have multiple signs that do not exceed three square feet in area. So you are allowed to have as many signs as you want, as long as they don't exceed that area requirement?
Well, we need to discuss that as part of this because I'm aware of in Simsbury, every campaign season, there's any number of houses with six, seven, sometimes eight signs, political signs on the lawn. And, you know, I think we have to make allowance for that. And we do under temporary sign, which comes up later. But I don't think you have the staff, nor do you want to put the staff in the position of saying, all right, you can advertise for a candidate, but only two candidates, because that would be a form, in my view, of content regulation. So we need to cover the base on that. I think we do that later in temporary signs. But I think it's impractical. You can regulate the duration that those signs can be up and key it around the event, which in most cases is the election or the primary. But trying to regulate the number, and I think you could also regulate the size. But trying to regulate the number, I think, is a difficult task. And I think most people that I've seen are pretty good about taking those signs down after the election. But it's open for discussion. Of all the protections for signage, that has constitutional protection, I think the political signs probably have the highest level of protection in terms of allowing people to express their opinion through a lawn sign. So we want to be careful about how we do that. But personal expression signs of any sign type, including campaign signs, it's not just campaign signs. You could, you know, vote yes on Meadowwood, for instance, would be another example of the type of sign that this is intended to permit and specifically cover. Any any personal expression that has any political content to it would fall under this.
Yeah, there are very few flags that are under three square feet, though.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we should probably highlight that and say we need to come back to that size limitation because three square feet is what, one and a half by two? I mean, typical lawn sign is what, maybe two feet by three feet? Does that sound right?
I think the typical is one and a half by three.
Okay, all right.
Every campaign season, there are bigger ones than that.
Yeah, yeah. And normally people put those up in the commercial areas, but sometimes in residential. So we need to think about that sign area limitation and determine whether that's too restrictive or or meets the requirement of the common practice. Because, you know, that political campaign sign is a standard size that people buy and to force people to buy custom-sized campaign signs is not going to make anybody happy, so. Is it one and a half by three? Is that what it is? So that would be what?
One and a half by two.
One and a half by two. So, yeah, that's three square feet.
Yeah, I think that's where that came from.
Probably.
I went out to a sign maker's site and just said, and that was the most popular. But there's also the bigger signs, the four by fours. We were seeing four by eights that are made in these big color presses or color inkjet. And for the last few elections, somewhere, somebody has agreed between the two parties to not allow anything over four by four or half of the four by eight. And we haven't seen anything bigger than that.
Yeah, a lot of this is regulated through the private agreement between the two parties. And that's a good way to do it because then you take the town out of it and you don't have the government regulating, presumably regulating political speech, which is what we're trying to avoid here.
But it excludes the personal expression, though.
It does. It absolutely does. And, you know, you're seeing more and more of that. I mean, you're seeing people put signs up on social issues that aren't limited to upcoming elections and, you know, that's sort of their right. And we can regulate it, but we can't regulate the content, nor can we make it so restrictive that it's an effective prohibition.
We could have a different size for the sign and the flag, for example.
Yes.
Okay, because the flag, I don't know, are they three by five, maybe, which would be fifteen square feet?
That sounds right.
Four by six.
Their four by six sounds big. I don't know what they are. We'll have to, you know, we should investigate that, though.
Yeah.
I have a four by six flag.
You have a four by six, okay, so that's, you know, that's
Twenty-four square feet.
Four, that's, you know, eight times the size we're limiting them to.
More to come on that. That's an area we should highlight for further discussion, to be sure.
Yeah, we're going to come back through these things again, so.
Yeah. Address signs up to suit signs stating address number and or name of occupants. Might want to think about that in residential districts. Signs that exceed three square feet in area, non-residential districts, five square feet in area. Again, these judgments are yours to make. I'm just basically putting down a marker of a topic that needs to be addressed. Public signs. That's self-explanatory. Private drive signs, signs or evidence of religious, civic, philanthropic, historical, educational organization. That's the signs you see for the Lions Club and the Rotary Club and, you know, the civic social clubs. And lots of times they're clustered on one big sign, but this allows each sign to be four square feet in area. Security signs, warning signs and flags. What do we say about flags? Mike could just scroll down to that. Maximum height of thirty feet, no more than two. Maximum is twenty-four square feet in residential districts, which is your four by six flag and thirty-five square feet in all other districts. Flags containing commercial messages. I think we need to distinguish between flags and flags containing commercial messages because a flag really is an emblem of a state, local, or governmental unit or a public entity, essentially. But there are many other types of flags, obviously, that we need to allow for, but distinguish from the regular flag. Legal licenses, vending machines, memorial signs. And look, if anybody can think of a category that I didn't include here, that's fair game, too.
P was interesting. I don't know how many of them there are.
Yeah, well, you see those, you know, the sometimes you see signs that say, you know, beans, peaches, apples, you know, the fruit stands or the vegetable stands will put up a sign that says available today, then a list of all the different types of crops that are available.
Yeah, that's usually at the stand, not in the field, but okay.
Yeah, yeah. This is back when the stand was in front of the field. Now it's a little different, I guess. And then nine point five is general regulations that apply to all signs. These are pretty self-explanatory. Sign materials, durable materials, non-corrosive fasteners, and installed and erected in accordance with the Connecticut State Building Code in good condition, good repair, and clearly legible, which, you know, is a problem from time to time. Sign area, we define a sign area. Moving down. Not much to be said. Sign height.
So you had one there that was a little inconsistent. If you can scroll up. Where's, oh, so if an element of a sign are movable or flexible, well, I thought we banned movable or flexible. Were they in the?
Yeah, that could be a carryover.
Somebody, you know, between combining different regs, I think they got.
Yep. Yeah, I tried to find all of those, but I probably missed more than one. Sign height. Permitted maximum for all signs is determined by the sign type and the zoning district in which the sign is located. Obviously, you're going to allow a bigger, higher sign on Route forty-four than you would in a residential area.
Yeah, and I think in another call where you, you know, we could distinguish by, you know, how far it is from the road and the speed of the highway. Right, so we, I mean, that is another way of regulating, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of the more recent regulations do have that speed limit factor as determining the size and height of signs because, again, it meets the objective criteria measure. And that's how you get to bigger signs in commercial areas because typically commercial areas have the higher speed limits in the larger roads.
That's covered later on.
Yeah, yeah. And then sign spacing, I think that's straightforward. Sign illumination, we should think about this carefully because you know, signs are changing now and they're being illuminated in lots of different ways. And they're changing messages with digital signs. I think the day of prohibiting all digital signs in all instances is probably behind us, you know, especially with the gas stations now. They all have these digital changeable signs because of price of gas changes, you know, almost by the day now.
Yeah, doesn't mean we need to allow that.
No, there's no requirement that you allow it, but you know, it's becoming more and more commercially acceptable to have not overly bright ones, but at least ones that could be digitally changed rather than, you know, the young kids with the ladder going out there and putting up the new price every day. It's up to you. I do think you allow it now, though, don't you? Well, that's a policy choice for you to make. All these illumination issues are all, there's no requirement that you allow illumination or anything like that. This is, again, taken from a model regulation and it's up to you to decide whether it's adaptable here or not. Digital signs.
I never knew there were.
Yeah, I wasn't familiar with that term either. Yeah. Electrical standards is pretty straightforward. Electrical State Building Code requirement, glare control. And then signs in residential zones. Any temporary sign, home occupation signs, freestanding and monument signs for residential developments containing one more than ten units shall be permitted, subject to following regulations. There's some things to think about there, whether one sign is enough, if you have multiple entrances to the development, whether too low or too high. One sign per street frontage, I guess, this covers that. Fifteen square feet, that's three by five. Height, eight feet, is that, you know, is that the right measurement? Most of them are lower than that, that I've seen, but they're not allowed to be illuminated. Some of them can be very, part of a very nice sentence statement into a development and you know, you're seeing more and more of that. And then the summary table for signs in residential districts. And then we get to the bigger category of signs in non-residential zones. And again, you can break this up even more if you'd like into industrial district, commercial districts, you know. This is all non-residential zones. Freestanding signs shall not exceed ten feet, which is not overly high when you're talking about Route forty-four or some of a larger thoroughfare. And you can distinguish that way. You can say on Route forty-four, they're going to be twelve feet. On hot metal, they have to be eight. The downtown districts can't be over six as long as it's consistent and objective. Now, number two is area maximum of thirty-two square feet per sign face. That's four by eight. Height is no higher than the eve line. And then wall signs. And awning and canopy signs, again, that's something that's become more and more popular. Some uses, projecting signs, window signs. And I put in here optional, upper-level buildings identification signs shall be permitted. That's signs for occupancies on the second floor, obviously, which is becoming more and more of a thing. And then we have our table. Here, we're approving all signs by site plan. That means all the signs come to the commission. And then we've got temporary signs, which relates back to the earlier discussion.
I actually have two questions.
Sure.
First of all, it's, there's some inconsistency because at one point we say it's ninety days and at another point we say it's thirty days. And I don't know if that's, so in the grid, we say ninety days, but then in section C, we say thirty days.
There's an inconsistency here and a couple of things, temporary stuff.
But then the other thing, maybe my ignorance, but do we ever actually define what a temporary sign is? You know, so I mean, if you have a sign, you know, is there, I don't know, I guess, I mean, is is a temporary sign a sign that has a specific event on it that expires or is a temporary, like what? I know what it means in theory, but do we ever define it? Because I don't know.
Many days. There's a duration that the sign can be up.
But why?
I would say, I would say a temporary sign is any sign that isn't a permanent sign as approved by the regulations. So if you have your sign, your permanent signage, and we can, it's always good to add a definition to clarify. But if you have your signage up and you have an event happening, you know, at Fitzgerald's where you're going to have a garden plant sale next Saturday or something, putting up a sign to advertise that would be a temporary sign. Same thing with, you know, any kind of sign that advertises an event or series of events that's over and above your permanent signage. But I do think a definition of temporary sign is a good idea.
There was also the use of incidental sign.
I think incidental sign would be a sign that says, you know, roof being repaired by Acme Roofing or something. But incidental signs should probably also have a definition.
Right.
I didn't put in a ten-page list of definitions because you can make yourself crazy with that. You're defining things which are have common sense definitions attached to them and really don't add to the regulations, far as I'm concerned. But there are some areas where we probably do need to add some definitions as we go through this. I think you already found two of them, and we definitely need to have the duration consistent. Whether it's thirty, why don't we stick with thirty days and eliminate the ninety days?
So I'm just going to ask a question. There are a few sites in town that have multiple or numerous political signs that seem to be permanent at this point in time. I mean, I'm just thinking of neighbors.
Yeah, the Trump signs you're talking about? There's a bunch of them out that.
There are a bunch of them out there, right.
Yeah, and they're in every town. We talked about that this morning with the town manager. I mean, yes, they're temporary signs. They're subject to some form of regulation. The issue is enforcement and creating a bigger problem by ordering them to be taken down and by letting them sort of just die out naturally. And they're, believe me, they're in every town. And they're, believe me, they're in every town. Um. It's an enforcement um dilemma, let's put it that way.
No, I, I, I understand that. I'm just, I just, they're like, they, they seem to saturate the properties and I, I just.
Yep.
Concerned for the neighbors who might, you know, be affected by that, but I, I, I understand the sensitivity of it.
Yeah. A- and look, there, there is a higher. There's a higher calling for political signs and, you know, if you ever went to court on it and it didn't have a facially objective regulation to support your. Enforcement order, you're gonna lose. Because political speech and I guess religious speech are the highest lo- receive the highest level of protection. Um. Strict scrutiny, they call it in legal terms. Uh, you have to show a compelling public interest. Based on an objective regulation that is no more restrictive than it needs to be. And, you know, i- it's difficult to do right now because I don't think we have that regulation.
That's, and that's even different than a campaign sign. That could be just personal, you know.
Is, that's exactly right. It's, you know, the, the, not to get into it, but the people who put the Trump signs up are saying. Much more than, you know, elect Donald Trump president. They're kind of ad- advertising their allegiance to a. Much in their minds, much larger political movement. That is ongoing. I'm sure if you ask them, you know. They would indicate that they're not advertising for a campaign for an election. They're advertising allegiance to this. Larger political movement and that's where it's tricky.
And, and we don't have any in town, but you know, you, I've seen pictures of where, you know, somebody paints something on the side of their house.
Yep.
A thought, a political thought, I mean, how, you know, you can't regulate that, I don't.
You can't regulate that. And, and it doesn't meet the definition of a sign under. Under the Connecticut general statutes that's recently interpreted by the top court. Because it's not advertising a business or service, goods for sale or a service. It's, and it's. Because of that, it, according to recent decisions by the court, it's not subject to town regulation. So we have all of those things to think about uh, when we go through this.
Okay, let's.
Installation and maintenance, straightforward permission, party posting temporary sign must have permission of the owner. That sounds common sense, but we all know that often doesn't happen. Uh, it doesn't happen on town property. And I think this is important to say, look, you're not gonna put. Um. Your political sign or your whatever sign up at the golf course or, you know, we had some Black Lives Matter signs go up there recently. You know, we had to. Tell people to take them down, you know. So that's an important principle and this eliminates the issue of, well, why can't I put my campaign sign in the. My, the front of town hall, which I, you know, I had a. A citizen a few years ago who was running for office, she often runs for office and she was stapling her campaign signs to the trees in the front of town hall. And I had to say, look, I've looked into it and you just don't have the permission to do that. And she raised a fuss about that. This clarifies no signs without the oh, permission of the owner. The owner in this case would be the town and um. You know, um. It's not, it's not a legal sign unless the owner is, is in agreement that the sign should go.
Now, you called out the, the town, but what about state property? Do we need to call that out too?
Well, no, it's the owner. In the case of state property, the owner would be the state of Connecticut.
Yeah, but you have, you know, you call out specifically town property.
Uh, we could call out state property as well, but the state gets jealous, uh, very nervous when we try to regulate in any way state property. Um, but I don't think it would be a, a bad idea to say. Town, state, or federal property. I don't know if there's any federal property in Simsbury, but we could put all three in. Uh, removal of unsafe, unlawful, or abandoned signs. This is an ongoing issue, obviously. Um. Creates a lot of work for Mike and his office. Abandoned sign is. Tricky, no, go ahead.
No, I say that's. The removal of signs, but I mean, that's something that we are constantly on, on the abandoned signs. As the commission knows and Laura can tell you how much time she spends on the roads picking those signs up. So yeah. We, this is a, one we deal with.
Yeah, and there are all kinds, right? I mean, there are real estate signs and, you know, financial seminar signs and. All kinds of things show up on the side of the road, I'm sure.
Mm-hmm.
And then we have the permit process, application requirements. Again, we should look at this carefully. Are we. Asking for enough? Are we asking for too much? We don't want to have a situation where in order to put up a sign, you need to hire a civil engineer. Um, it should be an application process that people can easily fill out, you know, with a pen or something. Uh, without a. Uh, in most cases, without. Too much in the way of a stamped and sealed site plan.
Does that? Does that underbe in the second line? Is that supposed to be rewired or revised?
And determine any portion of the revised information to be unnecessary or required. I'm sorry.
Required.
Required information. See, one of the things about working from home is, um, I do most my own typing. And um. That's always risky. And that's something that spell check wouldn't catch, so I'll change that. So here's where we get in the site plan depicting locations of proposed sign in existing language. Two copies of a plan drawn to scale, you know, is this too much? Is it? Just right or is it too little? That's, that's what we need to think about. Again, we don't wanna. Create a situation where the business owners are trying to get their sign approved so they can open up. And we create a application process that costs them a thousand dollars to fill out. So we'll just think about that, but. But there are, there are some necessary information like structural details, materials. I mean, all this stuff I think is color scheme is legitimate and should be required. An historic district should have its own set of rules, obviously.
One of the, one of the things that makes it expensive though, as you say, drawn to scale.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, if you took the drawn to scale out. It might be more flexible.
Yeah, and I think that. Sometimes drawing the scale is, is necessary, but most times it's not because. Well, I don't know, I draw, I, I'm not sure what drawing the scale, i- if you showed the dimensions of the proposed sign. It's gonna be four feet high and three feet wide. Um. That will give you, I think, the commission enough information and you'll know where the sign is going and you'll be able to estimate. Whether or not that's an appropriate size sign for that location.
I think sometimes so. If it's not drawn to scale, it's difficult to understand what the sign's gonna look like.
Well, we can say, you know, drawn to scale as maybe required um, by staff or something. And leave it up to staff to say, you know, we really need to have it drawn to scale so we can. See how it relates to other signs and see how it fits in with what's already there, that kind of thing. Or as may be required by the commission. I don't know, we need to think.
Yeah, drawn to scale isn't that costly. I mean, anybody can draw to scale.
Uh.
I mean, you're not gonna know how long it is relative to how high it is if it's not drawn to scale. Somebody can do a sketch and it can look completely different than the sketch. If it's not to scale. I mean, we've seen, we've, we've seen some rough sketches. It's kind of, kind of, uh.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I can see both sides of the argument.
Just, just my opinion.
Yep.
Okay, and Bob, and, and you know, so, so in section B here, you do have, you know, height, depth, color scheme, whatever. And we, you didn't have any of that regulation in here, but we could add that back in. As far as color schemes, material.
Yes.
Lighting, okay.
Yes.
They're watching TV and just. But they're not going to bed because Daddy said that they, they, they do wait for them.
Um. So that brings us down to review standards. And what I would invite you to do is, if you want, just, you know, mark this up. Just write on the side of it, whatever comments and get them back to Mike and he can get them to me and we can, Mike and I can go over it and incorporate your comments. After you've had a chance to review it more fully. But we need review standards and this is my first stab at it. You know, we want, I think we want landscaping at ground level. Uh, we want, you know, nice looking signs and plants around them and Simsbury's done a very good job with that to date and we wanna. Keep that up.
And, and just to, to, to piggyback on Bob's comment, I mean, we, we require a lot of these standards in our existing regs such as. The four-foot diameter of planting base around the, the base of the sign. So this is not a new standard that, that's, that's being forced upon the applicants.
So I do, I do have a question though. Uh, we mentioned color previously and, and as far as required standards. So, so we. We've done battle with color requirements, especially in the town center. Um. Where is that addressed here or does that come into um, a different requirement and different? Town center uh, code or?
The, the town center code has its own design standards for sure, but I think. A, a little bit up in the regulation, we talk about color and design and.
Yeah, but if we can't regulate content. You know. Is color content?
No, I don't think it is. I, I think content is, the, the best definition I've heard of. Uh, to define content is if you have to redesign, have to read what's on the sign to determine what regulation applies. You're regulating content. You don't have to redesign, re- redesign to determine that, you know, bright yellow is. It's not a good color for the sign or something like that. So I would distinguish between. You know, color scheme and the content of the sign.
So do, do we? Do we have to reference in this sign regulation? Um, code. That signs like in the town center. Also need to abide by color schemes or things like that. I mean, there's no. Reference in here. So are we kind of setting ourselves up then when somebody comes in and we've done this before and said, your colors aren't right? And so you can't have that sign.
Well, I think what we can solve for that by saying any conflict between this regulation and the town center code, the town center code shall prevail. That would take care of the town center code.
I thought we were gonna try to make one sign regulation that applied in both places.
Yeah, but there may be conflicts with some of the town center code. I, I think. My recommendation is where a conflict is found. You want the town center code to prevail over the general sign regulation because the town center code is. Comprehensive and signs are considered part of the overall um, design regulation of the town center. Same thing with historic district. We've done that with historic districts too. I mean, look, we know it's. It's difficult to overly regulate the aesthetics of signs or buildings. I think the best we can do is to have a design standard and a design manual that say, says all signs shall conform. Reasonably conform with the sign, design standards and design manual. But we.
This doesn't have any uniform sign plans that we have in the current reg. Um, you know, so that a plaza has to have all, you know. Somewhat uniform signs.
This has a section that I thought came from our regs which says that each. Um, site has a. Has a uniform sign plan.
Yeah, I did, I did take from the existing reg and put it, put certain sections in here that I thought you wanted to retain. But that you would wanna retain. If I miss something, then we can, we can add that to it. The uniform sign. Package for shopping centers is one that we, if we haven't put it in here, we definitely should.
I thought I read in there that um. Sites that had multiple vendor. Multiple stores had to have a uniform sign plan.
Yeah. David, right, I just scrolled back to it. The each law or combination of lots shall, shall be shown in one common site plan. One for, well, it's freestanding sign, I'm sorry.
Well, that, that's where it comes up though, right? That's the freestanding sign at the entrance to the shopping center that has that uniform. Sign plan. We can elaborate on that and make it more inclusive, but.
Yeah.
Okay, so you need a permit. You've got your permit requirements here. And then you've got your review standards. Substantial repair replacement. Fifty percent of the sign area, yes.
Um, what? Restrictions are there on a ZBA of overriding whatever's in your zoning reg?
Well, um, none unless you put it in the zoning regs that, you know, sign regulations cannot be varied. Actually, that comes out of the statute. I'd have to look at it. The statute defines what they can't vary. Um. And the rule of thumb is there's no such thing as a hardship for a sign variance. It, it, there's no possible definition of a hardship that. Applies to signs, but as you well know, that's up to the ZBA to, to interpret, so.
Well, we've had that, that kind of application in within the last six months.
Oh, I'm sure you have. I'm sure you have. Um, I don't know that signage is one of those areas under the statute that's carved out. From the jurisdiction of the zoning board of appeals, you know, use variances are, for instance. Um. I'll have to look at that.
Yeah, in Silo, we get that all the time, the, the, the line limits and stuff, but I didn't know about signs.
Yeah, well, I, look, I, I've, I've seen ZBAs vary sign regulations dramatically, you know, and. He, as someone who has to. Interpret or write statements of hardship. I challenge anyone to write a statement of hardship. I guess you could, if you had a rock. Uh, some sort of rock formation sticking out right before your business and there was only one place to put the sign, you know, that kind of thing. But boy, it's hard to, to, to state a hardship for a sign variance. Because they're all self-created, you know, everybody wants a bigger sign. Everybody wants a higher sign. They want it spinning on the top of their building like, you know, like Bob's Big Boy or something, um.
Can we make exceptions to our, our rules? Because we kind of treat the forty-four businesses differently because. You know, they're in kind of in competition with Avon and.
I, I think we can. I, I, I think that forty-four, the forty-four corridor. Is unique in the town of Simsbury in that. You know, you're competing with Avon on one side and Canton on the other. And if you're overly restrictive, more so than your neighbors, do you build in a competitive disadvantage for your businesses? I, I think we could do that. I, I don't know that there's a. Route forty-four specific zone, but I think we could call. Route forty-four specific zone, but I think we could call out a geographic area along State Route forty-four and we could have a difference in, in, in sign regulations for that. And there's, you know, there's a rational reason for doing that.
Okay, that's good to know because we kind of made that exception ourselves and it would be nice to standardize.
Yeah, and you know, there's not five sections in town like that. There's, there's one, so. Um, I, I could, I could see a, a good argument that would withhold judicial scrutiny for doing it that way. And I, look, you've done it, you've done the opposite to some extent in the Simsbury center zone, where you're probably more restrictive than you are in other areas. So I think in forty-four, you can be less restrictive because of the nature of the area and the businesses and the road and the uh, the character of the road and the speed limit and you know, other things that are beyond your control in terms of what other towns are allowing.
Yeah, but the town center is a zone whereas forty-four is in a separate zone.
That's true. That's true, but I do think we, I don't think we need a zone. We can call out a geographical area. As long as we can think of reasonable boundaries for it.
Bob, I mean, it's, it's all B three over there, right? And it so would be maybe a parcel that's zoned to B three that has frontage along Albany, Albany Avenue.
Exactly, exactly.
That would land it right there.
That gets it done. B three with frontage along Albany Avenue, Route forty-four.
So do we then need to also recognize the, the center town zone as well in the regulations or no?
Yeah, I'm going to add that. I'm going to add a statement that um, the um, town center zone regulations apply. And where there's a conflict, the town center zone regulations shall control.
Okay.
If that's, if that's what you want, you know, that, that's the way I would do it if you tell me to do it that way.
Well, I just worry that when we're, we're battling with people who want certain colors in their sign or things like that, that are restricted by the town center zone, that we don't have the backup.
Yeah, absolutely. It's gotta be one way or the other. It's like, what was it at the, uh, the liquor store, right? Uh, my good friend, um, Mr. Andrio. Remember that first sign you put up was not consistent with the town center zone?
Right.
Am I remembering that right?
It was the color.
Yeah, right. So we want to make sure that a business owner reading this regulation um, is clearly guided as to what regulation to look at and use for their sign, because we don't want them to misinterpret it, go out and spend thousands of dollars on a sign only to be told, well, you can't do that because it doesn't.
Right. Yeah, that's my concern.
Yeah, you don't want to, I mean, they don't do it intentionally most, most of the time they. So we want to be clear about what the expectation is. So that's it.
That's the summary.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Do we want to work our way through this document for a while? What do you guys think?
Or you want, you want us to redraft based on the comments we received, send it back around? And then you can make a decision whether you're ready for public hearing or not, understanding that because it's your, it's your application, the timelines don't apply to you, so you can, you know, you're not under the gun to finish your public hearing portion in any particular timeframe.
Right, but one of the, one of the things that I did was I went through and made notes along the side as you had suggested.
Yep.
Um, and I thought other people might have done that too. If we wanted to go through and comment in each one of those like we did in other parts of our regulations, we could wade our way through it.
Yeah, I think we need to kind of come to the, uh, you know, consensus here on how we're going to treat neon signs because you, you know, this reg has neon signs in it, uh, digitals and, um, and internally lit. I mean, I would be okay with internally lit if it were that Route forty-four district. But I'm still kind of restrictive. I think that does, I, I think people know that Simsbury is a little bit different, but they don't know why. You know, and I think one of the things that makes us a little different is how we handle signs. You know, I don't know that the average citizen knows, you know, why, why it looks good to them. And I think that is one of the reasons why it looks good to them.
But that isn't, I don't think everybody agrees with that either though.
I know, that's why we need a consensus on whether we're going to allow internally lit or not.
Well, we get, we get the center zone, which is where um, I would think the internally lit signs would be more useful. And yet we're saying that that, this isn't a document that covers the center zone.
Well, I, I think we would, I mean, I know what Bob's going to do there, but I, you know, it is a zone within this and I think you can have a center city zone, so town center zone with reference within this that either, you know, spikes it out, you know, repeats it all, or at least refers you to the town center zone.
Okay, well, I, I think that, you know, with these digital projections of things, you're going to get more and more uh, signs that are just totally, you know, uh, flexible and you could put pictures in there, you can do anything. People are, are going to want to do that. Um, the gas stations changing prices, that makes sense, uh. So I, I'm not sure that people would agree that it's Simsbury's character that we don't let people do things like that, especially in the center zone.
Actually, I would say more so in the center zone.
Okay, well, we, we, we have a difference.
You have no opinion there, yeah.
But I'm, you know, we can have everybody chime in and of course, we've got several people who weren't here today.
Right.
Um, so I think we ought to give everybody a chance to say their piece and make their opinions known. So the, the internally lit signs and the, the digital signs.
It's wide open. We can, we can do it any way that you think makes sense, but I, I, I hear you loud and clear on Route forty-four that I think that's easy to do and we can create it, a separate standard for Route forty-four, if that's what you choose to do.
But we have signs like, like the West Street package, the sign with uh, uh, Bud Light neon sign in the window. I mean, it's clearly in violation and they probably claim it's pre-existing, but Bud Light wasn't around. So, but you know, if we're going to let some people do it and other people not, um, that isn't fair either, so.
Yeah, we just gotta be ready, we, we've got to be ready to say, okay, we're all in or we're, we're not.
Yeah.
Uh, one way or the other, so.
And I think there's one up in the, uh, North Simsbury up in, uh, uh, is it the, I don't know, one of the, one of the businesses in that shopping plaza where by Holloway says a neon sign in it.
Yeah, one of those is, is grandfathered and even Antonio's has a grandfathered internally lit. Um, and he actually, I don't even know if he still does it, but in the second floor of the old well, he always had a neon sign in there that he kept lit just because he wanted to keep his grandfathering.
Yeah.
Um, one of the digital ones that um, is a, an exception to us is the state, um, is the lottery. I mean, most of the gas station, or most of the places that have Lotto tickets are doing the state sign that you have how many millions the price is.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
Um, you know, and.
Steve Antonio is chairman of the DRB now, so he.
So he knows how to skirt, skirt the law?
Anyway, so, um, yeah, I think we agree. Let's get the minor things. I'll send those in. If anybody else's comments, send those to Mike. And then we'll have a discussion of, uh.
Philosophy.
Philosophy, right. Historic and non-historic and all that sort of stuff.
Dave, or when do you want to have this next on the agenda and have us, have a, maybe Bob present to discuss this?
Um, what have we got coming up in the next week?
So, uh, next week you have, you have the site plan over for, uh, thirty-four Hot Metal Street. You will have a preliminary discussion with the Silverman Group. Um, I'm trying to remember, we have something else that night. Oh, hopefully we'll have feedback for EDC on the industrial regs.
I think, I think maybe we would rather do another special meeting sometime in between meetings, like on a Monday. Um, after we've put our comments in and Bob's had a chance to look at them. And maybe we can think more about the, the philosophy of what might fit. If we could do it geographically, you know, we could do it, you know, by streets or whatever.
I think we need an internal meeting before we have to bring Bob back.
Okay.
Bob back kind of when we're kind of, no, you know, we've got to do the philosophicals first.
Okay.
Then we can get Bob, you know, Bob back and just say what we've done is okay or not.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, uh, uh, because the philosophical discussion will guide the draftsmanship and, you know, if you're settled on the philosophy of it, the draftsmanship is relatively easy and straightforward. And if you, if you move into an area where I don't think you can do what you want to do, I'll just tell you.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. The tenth of May, let's, let's, everybody agree to do that? Reserve that time for a discussion of these internally lit topics and how to deal with it, digital signs.
Sounds fine to me.
Yep, sounds fine to me.
Okay, let's see if, let's send an email out and ask for the rest of the commissioners. See if they'd be willing to meet and discuss the uh, digital signs and internally lit signs on that, on the tenth of May. And then based on the outcome of that discussion, um, that will affect uh, the drafting and the rest of it. Okay?
Sounds good. Are we ready to adjourn?
Anybody got anything else they'd like to discuss along this line? We can't do anything new. Okay.
Motion to adjourn then.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second by Donna. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.
Good night everyone.
Or nothing.
Thanks, Bob.
We adjourn. Thank you, Bob.
Good night all.
I think it's a good job, Bob. Thank you.